To the public hearing regarding an RD ten code change consideration. Start, this is the comments here. Please try to limit your comments to three minutes.
President.
Okay. And do get up to the line, so there please state your name and address. Okay, on set, please.
So you said all that, but you got it. You got it, good. All right. On person of all, a person who was a part of the fact that the developer didn't care about the safety of children getting knocked off crosses in the Roscoe Road. And people were driving, was the fact they hate, they were not supposed to be driving, so that was going to be a lawsuit. This is clearly changed for the benefit of the residents at the expense of the residents. Generally, the terms that are associated with this is indicated that they continue to make a lawsuit. I don't want to see that happen. I want to clarify a couple of things. There's no way to sound like a building. People inside where the vehicles coming and going. There's no way to stop. Shit, well, the hundreds of vehicle lights going and coming. Two o'clock in the morning, one o'clock in the morning after an event. There's three values, I am a CCIM as the highest designation in real estate. I've done a billion dollars in commercial real estate. And I have seen firsthand how a development like this will hurt property values in a community and destroy the quiet enjoyment of the residents. I urge the town to listen to the residents that have spoken, immediately vote no, and to follow the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Hardisty.
Amy Hardisty, thirty nine Liberty Way. I'd like to note that as people come up to speak, you ask them to state their name and address. I assume that's to ensure their Unionville residents. However, during the last public hearing, you allowed the man from La Grange to speak on behalf of Mr. Fiscado. His opinion is about as valid as mine would be if I showed up to a public hearing in Connecticut. I've spoken repeatedly, I've spoken from a place of professional experience that spans fourteen years in the wedding and event industry. The first time I spoke, I listed examples of all the local farm style venues and highlighted that not one of them sits on less than one hundred acres. In fact, the average size is two hundred to six hundred acres. I highlight that your proposed new law contradicts our town noise ordinance. You haven't listened. You've repurposed the same law with a slightly higher acreage limit. There's clearly more going on here. The private interests of the developers taking precedence over the safety of our children, the preservation of the quiet enjoyment of our properties and our property values. Today, you have ignored all logic, all reason. You have ignored all the concerns of your residents, and you've ignored my professional experience in the event and hospitality industry. I not only plan weddings, I also consult for developers and have been hired to assess potential venue plans for real developers. Who care about the communities they plan to build in. I've mentioned this before, but it has fallen on deaf ears. So let me be clear. I have reviewed Joe Fiscado's plans. His event space and hotel accommodations are barely seventy five feet off the nearest neighbor's property line on both sides. He has a parking lot in front of the building. He lines his entrance directly across from the entrance to our residential neighborhood. As an event professional, as a consultant, his plans are terrible. They clearly highlight his inexperience in the event and hospitality industry. It is not viable plan the way he has laid out the building. Building it does not mean people will come. I find it interesting that he's made no attempt to appeal to the neighbors who are clearly upset. He has seemingly made no attempt to seek professional guidance on how to make an event venue successful. And he seems extremely confident that you supervisor Fraser have made him confident that this is a done deal. So let me leave you with one more real life example. A group of men sat around the table and redesigned the clubhouse of the Duchess Golf and Country Club with the high hopes and idea that it would be the next big successful wedding venue. And bring in new revenue to the club. These men designed the least functional possible space, and we all know that the redesign of that clubhouse is what led to the closing of a multi-generational golf club that stands vacant and abandoned to this day. The back of that property is now referred to as Tent City and is covered with squatters that cannot be removed. The only people in this room on this panel are men. You've disregarded everything that this woman has stood here and said. I do not want to see a beautiful property in our town sit vacant because you were all too stubborn to listen to the professional facts I have stood before you and highlighted over these multiple public hearings. The case is already made for me. It's open shut spot zoning. So I urge you to do the right thing. You can rewrite this law up to seventy nine point nine acres to continue to allow this property on Roscoe Road to qualify. But until it goes back to the hundred acres that it all began at, there is no judge that will believe this is not spot zoning. And frankly, I reviewed the plans very carefully if I were you. Because what Joe Fiscado has proposed will not succeed on a small property in Unionville or anywhere for that matter. I urge you to stop wasting taxpayer dollars on consultants and lawyers for the purpose of a private developer who, in my professional opinion, has no idea what he's doing.
Thank you. I'm not sure the first name, last name is Martin.
Keep it quick, Colin Martin, thirty one Liberty Way. I think Hans and Amy did a great job. Everything I have to say, I formally object to RD ten and the wedding venue that's proposed.
Thank you. Pete Rodriguez.
Good evening, Pete Rodriguez, fifteen Liberty Way. Spoken here before, my primary concern was daughter's safety. Highly concerned about the drunk driving Friday, Saturday nights. You know, at some point in time, all of our children would be driving up Roscoe Road, you know, in the evening when wedding venues getting out. And it's a deep concern of mine. So on top of that, you know, as everyone else has mentioned. We moved to the area for the rural life, less light, less noise pollution, and highly concerned that that'll be compromised as well. So formally object. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Cronin.
Seven Liberty Way. I'm also very much against the rezoning. I think everybody said everything that can be said at this point, we're going to keep coming back month after month, kind of wasting everybody's time saying the same thing. So. I guess my point is nothing I'm going to say, or anybody's going to say, we need you guys to move the needle for us. So I'm excited to see you guys hold up your end of bargain representing the town and what we're really after here. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Paul Cannavaro.
Cannavaro, eighteen eleven Roscoe Road, right across the street. Close venue. I've been here, third time. No, I'm against it. Keep going. Absolutely against it. Two things that I wanted to strike hit on. My builder was here last time. He did, like I said, didn't care about me or my neighbors. All I cared about was venue. Said, why the cops worry about that? I think we should care about our neighbors, and you guys should care about your neighbors as much as we do. And not how much he does, because he doesn't care. And that really struck me hard. The other thing, person from La Grange last time said there is no venue like this around thirty two. Brian's Farm, right over on eighty two, there's one over on Pleasant Ridge Road. We have, it's already real close by, so there's no need for this. It's down unless somebody else has some place where it can go. Totally against it, and I think you guys should vote against it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Michael Corr.
I just, yeah, that's what it is. It's hard to say if that's a tier or an R.
Teddy seventy three Derrick Road. I live not that far away, and I'm in favor of this project. I watched, I was there at the previous hearings, I did watch the last hearing. And I see a lot of exaggeration. Previous speaker just mentioned, there's two other venues like this, not too distant, not far apart. There's also a golf course, links to Unionville, which is very close to this, about two point four miles. I have not heard of a crime spree resulting from weddings happening at any of these venues. I have not heard of a rash of drunken driving coming from any of these venues. I drive these streets every single day. I drive them on weekends, Sundays, I live here. I have never seen one police officer pulling somebody over. You think, living here, over ten, I've lived in Unionville for about eighteen years, Derrick Road, just under ten years. You'd think I'd see one, never seen anything. This property is only zoned for residential, and that's a problem. Because the only thing you can build in Unionville is residential. I mean, if you, if what they want to go, you have to have a hundred acres, okay? Say it was a hundred acres, convention center gets put in, that's far worse environmental impact. Putting a group of houses there, far worse environmental impact. You know, I'm also going to say, I've known Mr. Fiscado for over a decade. He is a very upstanding and very good builder. He does care, his name is getting raked in the mud, and I find that a little bit offensive. Nobody else knows him, they just say, oh, he's a builder. He's lived in Pleasant Valley for twenty years. He's not some outsider from Brooklyn or down the city. He lives in the same community. He's around here all the time. He knows. I hear complaints about school buses. It's a small wedding venue. I don't recall there being weddings where they get out in the morning when school buses come by, or about three to four o'clock when buses come by. Doesn't happen. That's an exaggeration. All right? Our town could use some commercial development. We have very high taxes, it would be nice to have a little commercial to offset that a little bit. Something which is going to have a miniscule environmental impact. I believe he said he's going to be using a few acres of this property actually, and the other roughly seventy, seventy-five will be open land. What kind of project, which would have this kind of benefit to the town, is going to result in the kind of open space that we're going to have as a result of this? I drive by this parcel almost every single day. And if you drive by it, you'll notice there's a hill which goes straight down. This is going to get built at the bottom of the hill. Nobody's even going to see this. Now, it's also going to be, by understanding, built to look like a barn in full, you know, compliance of what this town looks like. It's the kind of project we should encourage. It isn't the kind of project which we should fight, and we should personally attack people.
Going to ask you to wrap it up.
Yeah.
Finished, okay, thank you. Please, no, nope, no applause, please. Diana Lenz.
Diana Lenz, twenty seven Burbank Club Road. I have ten houses in this town, not of mine, but my immediate family. And I care about the town. And I would much rather see pretty much everything the prior speaker said, a beautiful barn hosting happy events. Than a conference center which could entail a hotel. And were a bunch of low budget housing. And the town needs revenue, so I'm definitely for it.
Thank you. Ben Zimmerley.
Ben Zimmerley, twenty four Liberty Way, I'm speaking on behalf of my wife and myself. I think that for one reason only, the dangerousness of that stretch of the road, this should not be allowed. I do recognize that the town of Unionville needs to find some type of sustainable growth, so I agree with some of those positions. But this particular piece of property, somebody's going to die. That is a dangerous section of road, I pull out of it every single day. School buses might not matter because that's not going to be the right time of day, but at nine o'clock at night. On that section of road, when people are going sixty miles an hour, you can barely see over the hill. It took four years to get our development approved, because it was a very low density neighborhood. And they finally approved it for the site clearance. But to have any higher volume of cars coming in and out of there, other than a neighborhood, would be complete insanity. Somebody will die, and then we're all going to look back and say, you know, we shouldn't have done that. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. I have your wife signed up.
She has no comments right now.
Okay, anyone else here that would like to speak?
Really not have to keep getting up here and speaking, but I live at nineteen twelve Roscoe Road. And, excuse me.
Name please, too.
Sorry, Vicki Pittman, nineteen twelve Roscoe Road. I just want to say that, that the last meeting, there was a gentleman that came up here who didn't live in the town. And he said, you know, it'd be great because there weren't these kinds of venues around here. Well, I live on not, and if you look up La Grangeville, there's a hundred and twenty eight different wedding venues that pop up. And, you know, I have this whole list here, I'm not going to read them, but, you know, they're all over the place. If somebody wants to get married, there's, there's a whole bunch. We don't, we don't really need another one in a residential neighborhood, in, in our neighborhood. I can hear beep, beep, beep. Where's that coming from? I don't know if it's coming from the farm next door over here. I don't know if it's coming from building your houses up there on Liberty Way. I don't know if it's coming from over there where they're making the ice. I don't know if it's coming. I can hear it, I can't see it, but I can hear it. I can hear a hum. People have told me, oh, that's like they're making ice over there. I go outside, I'm like, where is that noise coming from? It's away from my house, I can hear the noise. It's like a vacuum that, that goes on, they'll go on for hours and hours. So anything that's going over there is going to definitely have an impact. I, I don't think that I have mentioned the, the road. Right where I live, everybody gets going fifty five miles an hour. I can't believe that, no one has got me, has gotten T-boned right there. You gotta turn everything off in your car, turn the radio, turn the, turn the heater, the, the air conditioner, whatever, roll down the window. And you gotta wait, and you gotta wait, and you gotta wait. And then it goes down in a little valley, and then you gotta wait. Because you can't hear it when it dips down there on the road. It's dangerous. Yesterday, a friend was here visiting from North Carolina, and I stood there looking out the window. Please be careful, please be careful, pulling out my driveway. If you live on that road, you don't know how dangerous it is. The thought of, of more people, you know, partying, whatever, just, it just. It, it just can't be permitted. I, I just, I just have a really hard time, and when I look over the zoning regulations for a residential district, none of the things that are involved with a wedding venue are really approved. And I don't, I don't understand how changing the name would make all those things be right. So. Okay. That's how I feel, I, I, I'm opposed to it, and I, I hope that you all take it very seriously, because I don't think it's a good idea for the town.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak? Yes.
Hi, my name's Erica Cannavaro, eighteen eleven Roscoe Road. I'm just going to back up what they're all saying. So I work weddings, I major deed. I'll tell you what, at three o'clock, two o'clock, when the kiddos are coming home on their bus, they're pulling in with trucks, they're pulling in with deliveries, they're pulling in with all kinds of stuff. So it does start when buses are on the road. You may not know that, I'm in the industry, I did see it. Top of that, it isn't so much just the fact, the noise goes right till ten, eleven, sometimes twelve o'clock, depending on the venue gives it. That's going to affect us. It's loud, you will hear it. I work these events. Top of that, although you might say having some sort of neighborhood there would be difficult, sure, there's going to be more cars, there's going to be more people. But they aren't going to all be drunk. I've worked venues, I've watched people leave. It's a nightmare. So yeah, there will be unequivocally drunk people on Roscoe Road. They will be going down that road, it will happen. You want to name it Friday, Saturday, Sunday, every single day, every single week, all year long, as long as you allow this to occur in our town. On top of that, the road, like the driveway I come out of, I'll tell you what, you're absolutely right. You count before you pull out. You put the windows down and you turn off the radio. Because I'm telling you, you're going to get killed. My husband went out during COVID when no one was allowed to touch anybody, and you couldn't see anything because he's a fireman. And people slammed, literally flipped his Mercedes up the hill, not down. Another guy took his motorcycle and slammed into our mailbox. There have been multiple accidents, at least four, in front of our home. That road is dangerous, y'all know it. It's just a funky way when you come up, you cannot see. If you do not count, you will get clipped, if not killed. I can promise you, there will be problems. So yeah, sure, I don't want the noise, and I don't want the lights, and I love my home, and I love the pasture, and I love the country. That's super important to me, but to live, their children, maybe my grandchildren visiting, it is literally going to be a detriment to our county. We voted for you. We love our, we love our area. We really hope you turn this down, there's got to be a way for someone to develop that name much more safe. And, you know, good for all the neighbors, not just this guy, I don't know who he is, it's no personal thing, he just doesn't realize it's dangerous. They will be drunk, I've watched it. Thank you, I do oppose.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? One more time? Okay. I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing to July sixteenth.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we will adjourn this hearing until July sixteen. Yes, seven PM here, as July sixteenth. Attorney says it's ready? Yeah. Believe me, I, I didn't ever expect it to take this long either. When the attorney agrees that it's ready. Okay. Do you want to go across the hall for a minute? Or how long you think that will take? Yeah. We've got five minutes before the meeting starts. Want to do that, or? Okay. All right, we're going to have an attorney-client meeting.
Do you need a motion?
No, because we're not meeting yet.
Do we make a motion for that?
Welcome everyone to the June fourth town board meeting. I apologize for the delay. Session just before the meeting, and we will start out with a pledge.
Motion to approve the minutes from May seventh, please. So, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. This coming Saturday, June seventh, we're going to have a draft horse pool at our Equestrian Center. I mentioned at the last meeting, we had lost Rich Albrecht, and we will be paying a special tribute to the Albrecht family at ten thirty. So anyone friends with the family, or, you know, Rich, you're all welcome to come to that tribute. And then the draft will start at eleven. Truck alive. Know it. Had a schedule, and is in service. The constable vehicle and code enforcement is supposed to be ready tomorrow, that we're going to pick that up and get that into service. And also want to mention, I've mentioned this previously. Unionvale Mail is still active, and apparently lately as well, I've gotten several complaints about it being used. Unionville no longer, Unionville Mail no longer originates here from Town Hall. And I've been informed it's being used for political purposes. It is not ours. We are in the process of developing a town email platform. And anyone who would like to participate in a legitimate news source here can contact the town clerk with their email address, and we'll get you on that list. We approved to revamp our website a couple of months ago, and it is getting close to being ready to reveal, and we will have an email contact system as part of that. Okay, board member reports, Councilman McDowell.
Good evening, everybody. I've just been working on the RD ten rezoning, discussing with the other board members and with members of the community. And then also working on reviewing the quotes for the salt shed.
Okay, thank you. Councilman McGinn.
As Supervisor Fraser mentioned, we have the draft horse pool on Saturday, it's a great event. If anyone has not been to that event, I highly encourage you to go to it. It's a great event to watch. Our local fire department will be providing food to purchase at the event, it'll be a great time, and that's on Saturday.
Okay, Councilman Welsh.
Yeah, in anticipation of our, our vote later for the salt shed, I've been reviewing all the details regarding the construction and pricing, and I hope. Past the. People are getting it rebuilt, desperately needed.
Yes, we do, thank you. Councilman Erickson?
Yes, I've been going over the same figures and it's on the searches, I think we have a very wide spread. It would be easy to come to an agreement on that. Needed that for a long time. I've been knocking on doors around the town, getting people's opinions on the hot button issues. The biggest issue continues to be the library and the abolishment of the library. People are very upset that we're paying money to both sides of lawyers, the library trustees lawyers. And the towns lawyers to fight each other over something that most people thought had been settled when they voted on a proposition. Other than that, I don't know anything to say, but that's been a bipartisan issue. It's, it's nothing to do with politics, it's from almost all residents of town. There were maybe two, three houses that I got to. And that told me they were in favor of the library time or park, but for the most part, people want to return to the Mid Hudson Library System. And I couldn't agree more with them. Thank you.
Town clerk, please. Okay, thank you. Tax collector informed me she would like to give a closeout report at our next meeting, so I'd like to table that until then. Recreation Department, Councilman Welsh, you want to read that one for us?
Okay.
Okay. Oh, oh, gee, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
I didn't see that.
No, I'm just so pale, I'm like a ghost. Sorry, it took me to scare you guys. So first of, first of all, I wanna give a huge thank you to the Arlington Jazz Ensembles for another fun music in the park event. Even with the rainy weather during setup, it was a perfect evening for everyone. Thank you as well to the Clark Truck Team for their excellent service throughout the evening and we look forward to having everyone back again next year. The pool is officially open on the weekends from eleven AM to six PM. The pool opens during the week starting June thirtieth. This year, we will have the pool open for residents to enjoy on Juneteenth. We know that that's something the residents asked for last year. So, big thank you to our aquatics director for getting this organized and having it staffed that day. Friday, June twenty-seventh, we will have our annual community night event here at Town Hall. From six PM to nine thirty PM, residents and their family and friends can come tailgate at Town Hall to enjoy food and drinks from various food trucks, games, raffle prizes, tickets are cash only for those. And kick off the summer season with a fireworks show. Once again, we will have our town departments tabling and available to ask our town staff and volunteers questions and learn more about different programming and services offered by the town. Further information on this event will be posted on our social media pages as well as both the town and the Parks and Recreation website. And other than that, our team is working hard to prepare for the start of summer camp. We are excited to welcome new and former campers back to enjoy their time at Time Warner Park. That is it for now.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thanks for all.
Yeah, I'd just like to say I was at that Music in the Park Friday night, it was outstanding. Those kids played like they were professionals, so very nice.
Okay, thank you. Um, I guess we'll.
Parker for you. Okay.
I'm reading that one, Charles.
Classic.
Wait a minute, is he here?
Park Report, June fourth, twenty twenty-five. Some areas around the park at Equestrian Center were too wet to bowl and have become overgrown. We have been brush hogging them now and the ground is starting to dry out, as well as the roughs of the disc golf course. Pool is now open on weekends only. It will open on weekdays starting June thirtieth. Hitty Pool is currently not open as we have had some tiles come off and we have to repair it, but it will, should be ready in time for the Health Department inspection next week and open the following weekend. We have received the new dump truck for the Parks Department way ahead of schedule. We'll be cleaning up our old vehicle to prepare it for sale. The annual draft horse pool will take place this Saturday, June seventh, at the Time Warner Equestrian Center. Event will start at eleven AM. Before the event, a memorial will take place for Richard Albrecht. A dedicated and long-term resident of Unionville and a key member of the Equestrian Center.
Okay, thank you. Question report, I got misinformation on that, she's out of town, but we have mentioned several times the draft, oh, you've got the report? For Equestrian Center? Oh, seniors, okay, right, so, um, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, the senior center is next. I missed that. Yeah, I'm all sorts here tonight for some reason.
Good evening. The Unionville Senior Club continues to grow and thrive. We average about twenty members at our Friday meetings and have welcomed a steady stream of local seniors and their family interested in joining the coolest club in town. Our newly extended hours now Monday through Friday are going smoothly thanks to the dedicated member volunteers. I would especially like to thank our treasurer, Mrs. Moore, and those who have stepped up to cover during those hours. We are saddened by the recent passing of one of our club members at a hundred and two years old. We did send a condolence card to his family. Our president, Erna Paltz, is currently recovering from extensive back surgery. In the meantime, I've had the pleasure of submitting the grant on behalf of the Unionville Senior Club and, uh, and the town of Unionville and anxiously awaiting them to announce if we got it in July. Our first senior trip was to the King Buffet on Route Nine. It was really popular with our members. They loved it, they had a great time. June twentieth, we will do our Father's Day luncheon. Uh, Monday, June twenty-third, we're having Monday with Mary. Mary is from the Duchess County Department of the Aging and she'll be here speaking to our seniors about benefits and services that are available for them. Membership for July through December are now open. It's a fifteen dollar charge. Pockets for membership are available in Town Hall, on the Unionville Senior Club resource table and online. For updates, you can follow us on Facebook. And I have submitted the updated bylaws and code of conduct to our town board. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And again, I'll mention the Equestrian Center report. We've mentioned several times the draft horse pool on Saturday at our Equestrian Center here on Duncan Road. We urge you all to attend. New business, declare surplus equipment. I mentioned earlier that the new Parks Truck come, came in and we need to declare the old one surplus to put out to auction.
I skipped that.
Yep.
I did. Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, you can say that.
Yeah. Public comment on agenda items. Anyone like to speak on agenda items? Okay, so I'll pick up where I left off. Yeah, we, we need to surplus the old truck and put that up out for auction and we'll put that up alongside of the old constable car and there's a piece of equipment at Parks and Surplus as well from the last meeting. So, Councilman Harrington, would you like to read that? Resolution, please.
Yes. Town of Unionville Town Board Resolution Number forty-five of twenty twenty-five. Resolution declaring Parks Department equipment surplus and authorizing its sale at public auction. Whereas the town of Unionville Parks Department currently owns old, worn out and obsolete equipment that cannot be repaired or is too costly to repair, but may have some salvage value. And whereas the town supervisor has declared the following equipment, it's no longer to be useful for town purposes and recommends that the surplus equipment be sold at public auction. Twenty-two, twenty fifteen Ford F-four fifty dump truck, VIN number one FDU F-four HTX FEB one two zero four three. Now therefore be it resolved as follows. The recitations set forth above are incorporated in this resolution as if fully set forth and adopted herein. The Town Board of the Town of Unionville hereby declares the aforementioned equipment to be surplus equipment and authorizes it to be sold at public auction through Absolute Auctions and Realty Incorporated, forty-five South Avenue, Pleasant Valley, New York, one two five six nine. The surplus equipment shall be sold in as-is condition without warranty as to condition. The sound, town supervisor is authorized, but not required, to set minimum bids for each surplus equipment. The town supervisor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documentation, including Department of Motor Vehicles forms and bill of sale necessary to transfer the twenty fifteen Ford F-four fifty dump truck, VIN number one FDU. VIN number as previously read, to the successful bidder. Proceeds from the sale of the surplus equipment shall be first used to pay any debt service that is outstanding for the items and any balance that remains shall be paid into the general fund.
Okay, a second on that motion, please. All, roll call vote, or any discussion rather? Roll call vote, please. Aye.
Aye, Supervisor Fraser.
Aye. Aye. Aye, okay, thank you. Old business. I'd like to hear from the engineer on where we're at with the salt shed.
Good evening. I believe we shared a updated recommendation letter recommending the award of the project to Garland Associates Inc. And we also shared an updated short EAF Environmental Assessment Form. So some of the things we're hoping to accomplish tonight is to secure the board's vote and approval to award the contract of the general contract for our word recommendation letter and also complete the seeker process for this. So if there's any questions on that, I'm happy to answer.
Any, any questions for Tom? Do you have anything to add, Ian?
Uh, no, no, we went through it. It's, it's all laid out in the, at least as far as, uh, as far as the seeker is concerned, it's laid out. I'll break a little closer. Can you hear me now? It's all laid out in parts one, two, and three. Part three, there's narrative as to the, uh, the reasoning behind the deck. And as far as the award, again, unless the board has a question, there's really no need to reiterate what's in the recommendation.
Okay, so this is a two-part resolution here. One is to accept the neg deck on that. And then the second resolution is to award the quote.
Yeah, procedurally you have to declare, uh, have a negative declaration first before you award the contract.
So any questions before we move on with the first resolution?
Okay, Councilman Durling, wanna read that one, please? Sure. Town of Unionville Town Board Resolution Number forty-six of twenty twenty-five. Resolution adopting negative declaration with respect to the Town of Unionville Highway Garage Salt Storage Shed replacement project. Whereas the Town Board of the Town of Unionville is seeking to remove and replace the existing three thousand five hundred square foot salt shed at the Town of Unionville Highway Garage. And whereas the Town Board has determined that the proposed action is an unlisted action pursuant to Article eight of the Environmental Conference Conservation Law, Part six one seven NYCRR, commonly known as Seeker, and is not subject to a coordinated review. And whereas the Town Board of the Town of Unionville has reviewed Part one of the short environmental assessment form and therefore caused to be prepared and reviewed parts of two and three of the short form EAF which are annexed hereto and made a part hereof. Now therefore be resolved as follows. The recitations above set forth are incorporated in this resolution as if fully set forth and adopted herein. The Town Board of the Town of Unionville has determined that the proposed action is an unlisted action pursuant to Article eight of the Environmental Conservation Law, Part six one seven NYCRR, Seeker for which a short form EAF has been prepared and is attached hereto. Three, the Town Board hereby finds and determines that it has considered the proposed action, reviewed all parts of the short form EAF, reviewed the criteria set forth in, in six NYCRR, section six one seven point seven C, thoroughly analyzed the relevant areas of potential environmental concern and has duly considered all of the potential environmental impacts and their magnitude in connection with the proposed action. The highway, the highway garage salt storage shed project will not result in any large or important environmental impacts and therefore, therefore will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment. And the reasons supporting this determinations are set forth on the attached termination of non-significance with respect to this project. And the Town Board hereby adopts a negative declaration pursuant to six NYCRR, section six one seven point seven with respect to the proposed action. And the Town Board hereby authorizes the supervisor of the Town of Unionville to sign a negative declaration and determination of non-significance with respect to the project. The Town Board hereby directs the town clerk to file a copy of said negative declaration and determine termination of non-significance in the records of the town. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
A second on that?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Harrington.
Aye.
Councilman Welsh. Supervisor Fraser.
Aye.
Councilman McGinn.
Aye. Aye. Okay, thank you. Uh, next resolution is to approve the contract to the low bidder, Island Construction. Uh, Councilman McGinn, would you like to read that, please?
Town of Unionville Town Board Resolution Number forty-three of twenty twenty-five. Resolution awarding general construction contract for the Town of Unionville Highway Garage Salt Storage Shed replacement project. Whereas Town of Unionville, the Town Board of the Town of Unionville previously authorized the town engineer to prepare its specifications and contract documents, the removal and replacement of the existing thirty-five hundred plus minus square foot, uh, square foot salt shed at the Town of Unionville Highway Garage. And whereas bids and specifications were prepared by Rennie Engineering Design, TLLC. And whereas bids were duly advertised and solicited and the following bids were received, opened and read aloud by the town clerk. Contractor, owners contracting corporation bid amount, one million, one hundred thirty-nine thousand. Ferrari and Sons bid amount, eight hundred sixty, sixty, eight hundred sixty thousand, six hundred. Vista Design General Contractors LLC, six hundred ninety thousand. Garland Associates, six hundred sixty-nine thousand. Whereas pursuant to Wicks Law, projects succeeding five hundred thousand require separate contracts for general construction, plumbing, HVAC and electrical work. And whereas a letter dated May twentieth, twenty twenty-five revised May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, the town engineer advised that the lowest responsible bidder was Garland Associates and had recommended that the Town Board award the general construction contract excluding the electrical work to Garland Associates in a total sum of six hundred fourteen thousand. All, all as set forth in the aforementioned recommendation letter, a copy of which was annexed hereto and made part of here and hereof. Now therefore be it resolved as follows. One, the recitations set forth above are incorporated in the resolution as if fully set forth and adopted herein. Two, Town Board of the Town of Unionville hereby awards the general construction contract excluding the electrical work for Town of Unionville Highway Garage Salt Shed Project to Garland Associates, a sum of six hundred fourteen thousand. Three, in accordance with the authorized bid specifications, the Town Board hereby authorizes the supervisor to execute the contracts documents as prepared by the engineers to the town, including the notice of award and notice to proceed and forward copy to Garland Associates. After the attorney to the town has confirmed that Garland Associates has duly executed the contract documents supplied to necessary performance bid, labor and material payment bond and provided insurance certificates as required by the bid specifications for the Town Board here. Hereby authorized the town engineer to prepare the electrical bid specifications and formally rebid the electrical work pursuant to Wicks Law.
Okay, second on that?
Second.
Uh, any comments? I'd just like to point out that there are several things going on in this resolution to make sure everybody's comfortable with everything that is happening. Okay? So that being said, and no further comments, ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilman Harrington.
Aye.
Councilman Welsh. Supervisor Fraser.
Aye.
Councilman McGinn.
Aye.
Councilman.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for me in regard? We'll, we'll move forward with the notice of award and getting the contract executed.
Right.
And as well as.
The electrical actor, yeah.
Very good, thanks, Tom.
Yeah, thanks for all your help, Tom.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Thank you. Okay. A public comment on town issues. Anyone? Okay. I'm gonna ask for a motion to go into executive session, discuss possible litigation on the library copier.
So moved.
Second on that, that's, okay. We're gonna move across the hall. When we come back, we'll have a motion to pay the bills. And our next meeting will be on June seventeenth here at seven thirty. We do not expect to conduct any further business after executive session, but you are welcome to stay.
Okay. I'm wanting to come back from executive.
So moved, so moved. Second, I can all say, aye. Thank you. We had executive session, there were no decisions made and no money allocated. Thank you. Uh, we had executive session. There were no decisions made and no money allocated. Um, before we end the meeting, I want to take another uh, moment here to thank Darren Sampson for uh, recording and running the video equipment here every, each and every meeting. Um, he comes in an hour in advance of the meeting to make sure that everything's set up and running properly. And there have been times where he's had to scramble and, and fix uh, snafus to, to get things online for. So again, I want to thank you for doing that. Um, I have a motion to pay the bills, please.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I mentioned it earlier. Our next meeting between eighteenth here at uh, seven thirty. Uh, motion to adjourn.
So.
Okay, thank you.
Hope to see y'all. Yep, Saturday morning, ten thirty.